I'd like to call the October 3 Common Council Meeting for the City of LaPorte to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Roger Galloway.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Treasurer Parthoon.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Kineshney.
Present.
Councilman Frankie.
Here.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilman Vincent.
Here.
All present.
I know, yeah, out of order.
Approval of minutes for the September 7 2022 Budget Workshop. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. How about the approval of minutes, September 19 2022 Council Meeting. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Petitions and comments of the citizens. I do not currently have any comment cards. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, I would also, as we talk about the continual domination of the community, the city of LaPorte, and wins over Michigan City, the opportunity here showed itself again. Lori Larson and a wonderful team of our employees.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please come forward.
I guess the win is as big as the trophy. Quite something. We sponsored, we being the Stormwater Department for the City of LaPorte, sponsored an educational canoeing fundraising event. It was last Saturday, and we came in first, and we did beat the mayor of Michigan City. I'm sure that's already been talked about.
And another Michigan City team as well.
And another Michigan City team as well, if that is correct. It was a really fun day, and we just wanted to present the trophy, and I'm not sure how to do that officially, but I'm pretty sure it fits here at City Hall somewhere.
Tucker, what do you think? You were part of that wonderful team.
You know, we kind of missed you out on the boat. We could have used your pizzazz there, but it was a domination. We were 20 seconds ahead of all the other teams, and yeah, no one stood a chance.
Well, I have assured Mayor Perry, we will not participate in other events without a better effort from them. So we do need that support ahead of time, so we look forward to that. But great job. We've got a great team that work every day, and then to come out on a Saturday to participate. Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Tucker. Let's give him a round of applause. You know, let's set it just, I was going to put it here, but I realize that it would be out of, we'd be in trouble, so set it there so we can share it with the Board of Works, because I'm sure Amanda will have this on the front page of the paper come tomorrow or the next day. Thank you both very much. Any other comments from the citizens? Standing Committee reports. President Frankie.
The Diversity and Inclusion Committee met on September 22. Planning was done for future events, starting with a trunk or treat on October 19 that the committee will participate in. They're looking at possible events for November and would like to create a very active schedule for 2023. Sustainability Committee kind of met on September 26. There was no quorum, but Nick Minnick, Todd Taylor, and myself discussed some ideas for future sustainability initiatives. The Redevelopment Commission met on September 28. The usual monthly claims approved, and some money was transferred around as budget housekeeping, and then Baker Tilly gave their annual update on TIFs. TIF 1, which is the central area, which encompasses the hospital and Newport Landing, some of those areas expire in 2035 and some in 2040. In '21, it was providing 1.5 million. This year, provided just under 900,000, and next year it'll drop under 800,000, since the old hospital is out of this TIF now. And the new hospital area, with the incentives they have, currently aren't contributing to that TIF, but will be in the future, but they are, the enterprise zone is seeing some capital from that. And the TIF 2, Thomas Rose area, has seen some substantial growth over recent years, and '21, it captured 1.2 million. In '22, it will capture 1.3. In 2023, it's expected to bring in 1.7 million. TIF 3, which is the East Gate TIF for the area by American Signature, this one's staying pretty much where it is, capturing around 334,000 a year. TIF 4, which is the Town Square Allocation Area, which encompasses like the Rural King and that area on the west side, is expected to bring in 80,000 this year, and 116 for '23. Outstanding debt obligations that already see were covered. There's four outstanding bonds. 2015 A Bond, which has 2.4 million outstanding, finalizes in 2036. 2015 B, which holds just north of 10 million outstanding, and finalizes in 2040. And these all extended the life of the Central Business and Thomas Rose Bonds as well. So that's where some of that money is also contributed to. And 20, the 2020 Bond, which is the Banks Bond, has 8.1 million due through 2045, and it should be getting paid down pretty rapidly now that that TIF is generating some good money. And the 2021 Bond has 3.5 million remaining due through 2036, and this can be paid through any of the TIF areas or enterprise zone funding. Overall, this year, we should have about 1.7 million remaining after the debt service, and it'll stabilize around 1.9 million the following year and for subsequent years in the future. So the future's looking pretty bright.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board met on September 21. The Northwest Indiana Paddling Association awarded the Park and Recreation Department the Lori E. Kovitz Accessibility Award for the inclusivity of the kayak launch. Nick Pierce of Aquatic Control attended the meeting to give the annual report. In both surveys conducted in May and August, neither survey detected any Eurasian watermelon foil or other invasives in Clear Lake for the fifth consecutive year. Future management will consist of selective spot treatments for the Eurasian watermelon foil wherever necessary. Board approval was given for the Civic Auditorium HVAC improvements along with the drawings and layouts for the Clear Lake Greenway. The Park Department will be signing an agreement with SEH to do a feasibility study regarding adding a second larger lodge on Stone Lake. With funding from the Healthcare Foundation, a memo of understanding will be entered into with the Jump Start Program, which is a software fundraising tool that will help generate revenue. Permission was given for the Indiana Tree Climbing Competition hosted by the Indiana Arborists Association to submit a bid to host their tree climbing event on the park grounds in front of the park office next year sometime between late August and early October. A $100 per event usage fee was set for the disc golf course at Kestling Park, and the November Park Board meeting has been moved up to Wednesday, November 9, due to Mark Schreiber and Pam Carroll attending the Indiana Parks and Recreation Association Conference. And then last, the Park Department has started the process of preparing a new five-year master plan and is encouraging all residents to take an online survey available at www.surveymonkey.com/r/lrpcy22. The survey is available through October 7. The master plan reflects the desires and needs of the community, therefore citizens' responses are very important. And then Traffic Commission will be meeting tomorrow, 5:00 PM at the police station.
Councilman Vincent.
Nothing to add this evening.
Councilman Galloway.
Mayor's Veterans Committee met on September 20. Okay, November 11, it's Veterans Day Celebration. Coffee and donuts will start at 9:00. Spaghetti luncheon for veterans and their spouses will be from 12 to 3. That's free. There's a small charge for everybody else. It'll be the 35th anniversary, and Todd Rakito, the State Attorney, will be the speaker. Police Merit Commission, they'll be meeting at 10, 11, 22. Should be a week from Tuesday.
That's what I've got. Councilwoman Cutler.
Due to next Monday being a holiday, the Bid Board will meet on Tuesday, October 11, at 5:00 PM in Council Chambers, and the UEA will meet on Wednesday, the 19, at 4:00 PM at the Leap offices.
Councilwoman West.
The Fire Merit Commission will meet this Wednesday, October 5, at 6:30 at Fire Station Number 1.
Councilwoman Kineshney.
The HPC. Just a friendly reminder that the HPC, in conjunction with Indiana Landmarks, will be cosponsoring a hands-on workshop of the basics of historic window construction and restoration. This workshop will be held on Saturday, October 22, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM Central Standard Time at the LaPorte Healthcare Foundation. Tickets are free for Indiana Landmarks members and are only $5 for the general public. Pre-registration is required for this event. A link to the registration can be found on the city's website through the HPC's page. The next HPC meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 18, at 5:30 here in Council Chambers. The Airport Authority, another friendly reminder, the airport's trick-or-treat event will take place this Saturday from 1 to 3:00 PM. Registration is required, and we hope that all participants have a spooktacular time. The Airport Authority will meet next on Wednesday, October 12, at 5:15 at the airport.
Thank you. Councilman Vincent, second and final reading.
Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a second and final reading of an ordinance by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Councilman Vincent.
An ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for 2023 Civil-City Budget.
As a reminder, this is just...
It's proposed for adoption this evening.
But this information does, I just want to give a quick breakdown of what this does.
This is our budget, this is the Civil-City Budget for 2023. It is posted on Indiana's Gateway. If you'd like to look at details, there is a nice budget presentation last Council Meeting, and the minutes detail that budget workshop. I'm not going to go over it again.
No, that's plenty.
It was a good meeting.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on the budget? Anybody from the public? Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0. Councilwoman West.
Your Honor, I move to read an ordinance for the second time by title only. Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Councilwoman West.
An ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2023 Redevelopment Commission Budget.
So this is for the Redevelopment Commission, year 2023. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on the budget for Redevelopment Commission? Hearing none, do I have a motion to pass?
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0. Councilwoman Kineshney, second and final reading.
I move to read an ordinance for the second time by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Councilwoman Kineshney.
An ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for 2023 Airport Budget.
This is the second reading for the Airport Budget. Anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve? Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 7-0. Councilwoman Cutler, introduction of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance, read for the first time, and it's in entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Councilwoman Cutler.
Okay, an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, for the year 2023. Be ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, Section 1, that from and after the first day of January 2023, the salary and pay schedule for the appointed officers and employees of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, be fixed as follows. Salary schedule as presented by Common Council Finance Committee, October 17, 2022, to the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana. The Common Council Finance Committee of the City of LaPorte, Indiana hereby fixes the salaries and pay schedule for appointed officers and employees of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, beginning January 1, 2023. The various divisions of the city shall consist of the following creative positions, except as otherwise authorized. Employees herein may receive compensation as set forth or within the respective ranges of amounts set herein. Wage and salary ranges do not specify starting wages or salary. The starting wage or salary is dependent on qualifications. Mayor's Office, Executive Assistant, $56,100. Clerk Treasurer, Deputy Clerk Treasurer, $60,000. Deputy Clerk Treasurer, $19,000. Payroll Administrator, split with Human Resources, $22,950. Accounts Receivable Payable Administrator, $45,900. Engineering Department, City Engineer, $104,749. City Engineer Assistant Director, $75,000. Building Inspector, $59,160. Engineer Assistant Project Manager, $48,000. CDP Engineering Coordinator, split with CDP, $20,910. Board of Works, Board Member, $7,500. Human Resource, Human Resource Director, $77,000. Human Resource Administrative Assistant, 832 hours, $26,624. Payroll Administrator, split with Clerk Treasurer, $22,950. Communications, Communication Director, $56,000. Community Development and Planning, Director of Community Development and Planning, $85,000. City Planner, $52,000. CDP Engineering Coordinator, split with Engineering, $20,910. Housing and Building Code Enforcement, Director, split with MVH, $40,000. Code Compliance Officer 2, $41,820. Code Compliance Officer 1, at 1683 an hour, $35,012. Labor split with MVH, 1,040 hours, 1683 an hour. Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Grant Program Manager, $57,826. Park and Recreation Department, Director Parks and Recreation, $68,115. Assistant Director of Park and Recreation, split with Recreation NR, $23,750. Director of Recreation, split with Recreation NR, $30,530. Office Manager, $46,350. Administrative Assistant, $35,100. Maintenance, split with Police, $23,460. Foreman, $2658 an hour. Assistant Foreman, $2329 an hour. Mechanic, $2035 an hour. Laborer, $1894 an hour. Laborer 2, $1857 an hour. Senior Center Supervisor, 1,508 hours, $18 an hour. Seasonal Employees, minimum wage to $1650. Mechanic, $1962 an hour. Assistant Golf Professional, $1895 an hour. Seasonal Employees, minimum wage to $1650. Civic Auditorium, Administrative Assistant, split with Fire Department, $19,604. Custodian 1, $1924 an hour. Custodian 2, $1857 an hour. Part-time Employees, minimum wage to $1650. Civic Auditorium, non-reverting, City of LaPorte Event Coordinator, $57,200. City of LaPorte Part-Time Event Coordinator, 21 hours, 1,508 hours, $31,668. Recreation, non-reverting Directory of Recreation, split with Parks and Rec, $30,530. Assistant Director Parks and Recreation, split with Recreation NR, $23,750. Director, split with Code Enforcement, oops, I'm sorry, Motor Vehicle Highway Streets, Director, split with Code Enforcement, $40,000. Superintendent, $63,750. Assistant Superintendent, $2651 an hour. Administrative Assistant, split with Police Department, $19,604. Lead Heavy Equipment Mechanic, $26 an hour. Heavy Equipment Mechanic, $23 an hour. Driver/Operator Level 1, $2050 an hour. Driver/Operator Level 2, $2150 an hour. Heavy Equipment Operator, $22 an hour. Labor, split with Code Enforcement, 1,040 hours, 1683 an hour. Part-time Laborer, 1,508 hours, $1650 an hour. Department of Transportation, Managers, $60,000. Transportation Assistant Director, Dispatcher, $40,560. Driver, 1683 an hour. Maintenance Mechanic, 2402 an hour. Part-time Dispatcher, 883 hours, $1650 an hour. Driver, part-time, $1650 an hour. Police, Civil Service, and Fire Merit Commission, Commissioner Member, $895. Public Safety, Police Department, Chief, $75,000. Assistant Chief, $70,000. Captain, $66,000. Sergeant, $63,000. Corporal, 58, oops, I'm sorry, Corporal, $60,000. Specialist, Indiana Code 36-8-1-11, $58,000. Patrolman, $55,000. Probationary Officer, $50,000. Civilian Police, Records Clerk, Communications Controller, $32,640. Administrative Assistant, split with MVH, Police Merit Secretary, $22,954. Maintenance, split with Park, $23,460. Shift Differential Pay, each police officer, maximum of 10 officers assigned to duty on the second shift, shall be entitled to receive $750, and each police officer, maximum of 10 officers assigned to the third shift, shall be entitled to receive $1,000, and each officer assigned duty with the Detective Bureau shall be entitled to $1,000 on an annual basis to be added after longevity and base pay are calculated. K-9 Handlers, police officers currently serving as City of LaPorte Department K-9 Handlers shall receive $3,000 on an annual basis, to be added after longevity and base pay are calculated at a maximum of three officers. Certification Pay, certification pay shall be paid according to the Fraternal Order of Police, LaPorte Lodge Number 54, an affiliate of the Indiana Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council Incorporated collective bargaining agreement. Certified Salary, pursuant to Indiana Code 36-8-1-11, the certified salary for 2023 will be calculated at the rate of $58,000 with 14% longevity of $8,120, for a total of $66,120. Fire Department, Chief, $75,000. Assistant Chief, $70,000. Battalion Chief, $66,000. Inspector, $66,000. Training Officer, $66,000. Mechanic, $66,000. Captain, $63,000. Firefighter Specialist, Indiana Code 36-8-1-11, $58,000. Firefighter, $55,000. Probation Firefighter, $50,000. Civilian Fire, Administrative Assistant, split with Civic, Fire Merit Secretary, $22,954. Certification Pay, each firefighter who attains certification as a first responder shall receive an amount equal to 1% of his or her basic salary, in addition to salary and longevity pay. Each firefighter who attains certification as an EMT will receive an amount equal to 2% of his or her basic salary, in addition to salary and longevity pay. Each firefighter who attains certification as a paramedic shall receive an amount equal to 3% of his or her basic salary, in addition to salary and longevity pay. Certified Salary, pursuant to Indiana Code 36-8-1-11, the certified salary for 2023 will be calculated at the rate of $58,000 with 14% longevity of $8,120, for a total of $66,120. Longevity for Public Safety Officers Only, each police officer and firefighter excluding civilian employees shall receive longevity at the following rate. After three years, 2% of basic salary or basic hourly. After six years, 4%. After nine years, 6%. After 12 years, 8%. After 15 years, 10%. After 18 years, 12%. And after 20 years, 14% of basic salary or basic hourly. Basic hourly wage means that which, the employee received for 40 hours' work and shall not include overtime or fringe benefits. Longevity increases take effect the first full pay period following the employee's anniversary date of employment. One moment, I need to drink some water.
You're doing great. You are.
Take a breath. You've been fantastic.
Almost done. Utilities. Utility Office, Utilities Office Manager, $51,000. Utilities Accounting Administrator, $45,900. Utilities Assistant Office Manager, $45,900. Utilities Office Specialist, $38,500. Utility Office Customer Service, $35,700. Water, Director, $75,000. Operations Office Administrator, $43,860. Water Quality Supervisor, $2851 an hour. Water Distribution System Operator Level 1, $1961 per hour. Water Distribution System Operator Level 2, $2108 an hour. Level 3, $2353 an hour, and Level 3.2, $26.52 an hour. Water Distribution System Supervisor, $30.99 an hour. WTP Operator Level 1, $1961 an hour. Level 2, $2108 an hour. Level 3, $2353 an hour. Level 3.2, $2652 an hour. WTP Supervisor, $30.99 an hour. Water Facility Maintenance Supervisor, $25.60 an hour. Water Meter and Backflow Operator Level 1, $19.61 an hour. Water Meter and Backflow Operator Level 2, $2108 an hour. Level 3, $2482 an hour. Level 3.1, $25.71 an hour. Water Meter and Backflow Supervisor, $28.51 an hour. Water Treatment Plant Laborer, $16.83 an hour. Licensed Operator Bonus Pay, water system operators with a current and valid IDEM, DSL, and/or WT3 certifications shall receive an additional 70 cents per hour pay for each applicable license, up to a maximum of two grades, $1.40 an hour. For salaried personnel, the incentives shall be based upon a 2,080-hour work year. Waste Water, Director, $82,467. Industrial and Commercial WW Coordinator, $68,850. Operations Office Administrator Level 1, $35,000. Collection System Operator Level 1, $19.61 an hour. Collection System Operator Level 2, $21.08 an hour. Level 3, $23.53 an hour, and Level 3.2, $26.52 an hour. Collection System Supervisor, $30.99 an hour. WWTP Operator Level 1, $19.61 an hour. Level 2, $21.08 an hour. Level 2.2, $22.55 an hour. Level 3, $23.53 an hour. And WWTP Supervisor, $30.99 an hour. Lab Technician, $17.29 an hour. Assistant Chemist, $27.37 an hour. Chemist, $30.99 an hour. Part-time WWTP Operator Level 1, $17.29 an hour. Storm Water, MS4 Coordinator, $51,000. GIS Technician, $51,000. Licensed Operator Bonus Pay, Waste Water Department personnel in possession of a current and valid Indiana Department of Environmental Management Municipal Waterfront Certification License or a valid Collection System License through association of boards of certification will be eligible for an additional 35 cents per hour increase in base pay. will be eligible for an additional thirty-five cents per hour increase in base pay for each applicable license grade held up to the maximum of four grades, a dollar forty an hour. For salaried personnel, certification compensation will be based upon a two thousand eighty-dollar work hour work year. Storm water department personnel in possession of a current and valid certificate professional in municipal storm water management of Board of Public Works and Safety Approved equivalent accreditation will be eligible for an additional dollar forty an hour. Waste water and storm water certifications are not interchangeable. The rates shown as wages and salaries for the position as listed are maximum rates and may be less as determined appropriate. Section two, department heads at their option may give compensation time off in lieu of overtime pay, but not to exceed eighty hours except for police and fire, which may not exceed three hundred sixty hours. Compensatory time off shall be given at the same rate as overtime pay and is required by Federal Labor Standard Act. Did I miss a park and rec?
Just Beechwood.
Oh, Beechwood, I'm sorry. Park and Recreation Department, Beechwood, golf course professional, fifty-seven thousand two hundred dollars and golf course director, fifty-three thousand and forty dollars. Section three, part-time pay for fire department and police department officer personnel shall not exceed twenty-five dollars per hour. Section four, all other part-time personnel of all departments, including the police and fire departments, not serving as officer personnel, shall not exceed sixteen dollars and fifty cents per hour. Section five, police and fire fitness program, the Fraternal Order of Police, Lapeur Lodge Number Fifty-four, an affiliate of the Indiana Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council Incorporated and the Lapeur Professional Firefighters Association Incorporated, an affiliate of the International Association of Firefighters Local Number Three Six Three, shall be entitled to fitness program funding per their respective collective bargaining agreements. Section six, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective from and after its passage and approval by the mayor. End of ordinance.
Good job. Impressive.
Good job.
Yes. We do have two more to add.
Oh, wait, she read them all.
I did read them. I missed those, I'm sorry.
Thank you, no, I apologize. So that is the ordinance outside of elected officials. Is there any comments from the public? This is the first reading, are there questions? I mean, obviously, the finance committee's been through this. The process has been, we've sat down with the department heads, with their team to listen to what the concerns are, what the issues are. I mean, obviously, we're competing with private industry every day. And it's a different world, whether it's police and fire, whether it's water and sewer and so forth. We've got some technical individuals that would be difficult to be replaced, but I think the finance committee did a heck of a job putting together a competitive wage that will allow us to continue to provide clean water, our wastewater moving, safety and fire, and park and rec as well, so.
Counsel did budget for the salary study in 2023, so that's part of the budget. And Andrea and Mayor are heading that up as well.
As well, these wages are salary caps. So they don't automatically, every employee will not go to the cap. They'll have an opportunity with reviews to see their wage increase, but it will not go higher than what you've heard today. It won't automatically be at that number, so we just go at the high end. Questions again from the council, anybody from the public? Councilwoman Ficus.
I just have one. On the first page, it says salary schedule is presented by Common Council Finance Committee, October 17th, 2022.
That'll be the second reading.
Oh, for the second, okay.
Oh, yeah, that's the date, that's the date it'll pass.
Okay. I just, I just.
Oppose the passage, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure on that one. Thank you.
Those are questions?
Thanks, Carol.
We will then move that to October 22nd. And once again, impressive, Councilwoman.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Ficus, introduction of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed, Councilwoman Ficus.
An ordinance establishing salaries of elected officials of the City of Lapeur from the general fund for the year 2023, whereas the City of Lapeur wishes to establish the salaries of all elected officials of the City of Lapeur from the general fund for the term beginning January 1st, 2023. Therefore be it and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of Lapeur as follows. Section one, that salaries of the elected officials of the City of Lapeur for the year 2023 shall be as follows. Mayor, eighty thousand dollars. Clerk treasurer, eighty thousand dollars. Council members, twelve thousand dollars. Section two, this ordinance shall be in effect on and after January 1st, 2023. End of ordinance.
Comments from the council or the public? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Again, these salaries are the maximum that could be paid due to the salary cap. Doesn't mean automatically all of these would go there, but.
I saw on social media that somebody had commented, council makes two million a year. I thought we were getting a raise. A little disappointed.
Yeah, we'll take it.
Well, education is key to success in government, so.
Hopefully, they're paying attention.
Anybody from the public that would like to speak on the elected officials' salaries or anybody from council that have questions? Hearing none, we will move that to the October 17th meeting as well. Councilman Galloway.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce a resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed, Councilman Galloway.
Resolution to transfer funds within the 2022 budgets, whereas there are additional monies needed in certain light items in the 2022 budgets in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Now therefore be it and it is hereby resolved by the Common Council of the City of Lapeur, Indiana, that the following transfers be made within the following budgets for the year 2022. General fund, clerk treasurer, one one zero one dash zero four one from three ninety-one, other services to two one one, office supplies, one thousand dollars. Counsel, one one zero one dash six dash zero six nine from one one two three unemployment to one two four, fire and police pension, seven thousand four hundred. Police, one one oh one dash three seven zero from two four one, other supplies to three fifty-one utilities, nine thousand dollars. From three twenty-one, communication transportation to three fifty-one utilities, six thousand dollars. From three twenty-one, communication transportation to two two one, operating, ten thousand dollars. From three thirty-one, printing advertising to three fifty-one utilities, two thousand dollars. From three sixty-one, repairs, maintenance to two twenty-one, operating, ten thousand dollars. Major moves, two two four four dash five three two, from four four one zero zero three, Park Street Project, to four four one oh two two, oh oh two. Local match grants, twenty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars. Municipal surtax fund, two two four nine dash five two four, from four twenty-one paving to five twenty, transfers from local match community crossing grant, four hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Municipal wheel tax fund, twenty-two fifty dash five two four, from four twenty-one paving to five twenty transfers, local match community crossing grants, twenty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. Fire pension, eighty-eight oh one dash three six two, from three fifteen professional services to one 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 salaries, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
End of resolution. Thank you. This is a resolution, so this can pass this evening. Are there any questions on this resolution from the public? Any resolutions? This is a normal part of business that happens throughout the years when transfers need to happen, correct?
We're nearing the end of the year, so you'll see more of these.
Do I have a motion to pass?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion, again, from the public. Any comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Seven zero. Other business, really, the only item that I have is, is the election draws close this November from a city perspective. I hope everybody keeps, keeps listening to hear candidates' thoughts on the corridor, on annexation on 39 North, who is supportive of what the city is doing, and challenge individuals that they either support or they don't. It's pretty easy on the corridor. And I encourage any member that's up for election to visit with Nick Minnick. Remember, this is a county project. And we are working right now with the street department to put up signs. The commissioners have said they want Seaver's Road, so we're going to oblige them and put signs up off Lincoln Way to encourage truck traffic to go up north through Thomas Rose and then over on Seaver's Road. And that was their resolution, and we will continue. It's not a long-term resolution. I think it's a poor decision at best. And again, when you look at what Nick Minnick has presented and worked with Lockmuller, and again, this is a county project, and we're basically talking about a two-lane road. If you're opposed to this road, then you're opposed to ever having new roads in the county ever again. And so this is an opportunity to those that live on Indiana Ave, not have their homes shake, their businesses on Lincoln Way not shake. It's called progress. And I hope everybody listens and challenges those that are up for office that have the City of Lapeur in mind. And Tim, you've mentioned before how you're building shakes.
All day long.
Shakes.
Yep, we're getting ready to move out of downtown because of it.
Laura, you know what the business is like when it shakes?
Sometimes we think it's an earthquake in the middle of the night. It's a, the trucks are overweight. I believe that many trucks come through our downtown because they are overweight and they are avoiding getting on too soon. I think people are coming through town that don't need to come through town.
And, yeah, they do hit our planners. And the answer isn't having our police, who need to focus on higher-end crimes, not have them pull over and be DOT police and pull over trucks, because then you're pulling over everybody. So I hope you all in the public interviews ask question of the candidates out there about progress. I think that's important. So keep the corridor in mind, keep 39 annexation to solve the water problem in exchange for annexation. We are the operator, we're the only one that probably can receive funds for the improvements that are necessary. So we're going to continue to move forward there. And I think charity has offered many of the elected officials or candidates to her building. And can you just give me a hands up on how many have showed up? Zero to sit at her business outside and experience that, so there's still time. But it's far from over. Other comments from the council members?
Speaking of charity, the downtown Spooktacular is also this Saturday, so there's plenty of free candy out there for kids this weekend. But hats off to her and her team with the Lapeur Small Business Coalition.
There are forty-five small businesses. They have cleaning on Saturday from Jackson all the way down to New York.
Oh, fantastic. Oh, yes, fall cleanup as well will be November 11th through the 17th. And for the Spooktacular, Courtney mentioned if Mr. Frank, President Frank, he could take his masks off. Rick, please forward.
I think you have the date wrong for the fall cleanup.
I thought it was the seventh through eleventh.
Seven through eleven.
That's what I thought, too.
Maybe that's right, I could be.
That's what we discussed last, at the last council meeting.
I think you are correct. Thank you. I even said that. November 7th through the 11th. Mayor? Councilman Galloway.
Patent Cemetery cleanup is November 5th.
Okay, Patent Cemetery is November 5th. I believe Mr. Harris has received some funds to keep maintenance going, but it would be great for the public to come out and help.
You bet.
Help our veterans. We'll update that, but I think you are right, the seventh through the eleventh. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed, we are adjourned, everybody have a great evening.